So I can call this meeting to order. And call our work session to order. Hello, everyone. We do have the only one we we are missing tonight is Ms. Serrano. Yep, I see her. Everyone is here. The only one we are probably missing is Mr. Johnson, who is under the weather. And possibly he may be in the hospital or he is out of the hospital today. So keep him in your thoughts.
Absolutely.
We will open this meeting. I had the agenda up. We will open this meeting tonight with a discussion about the Department of Homeland Security and Sanctuary Cities and the notification that we received from Homeland Security. And we have our attorney on the line on this Zoom, Judge Deloach. And Judge, would you like to give us an update, your take on what was issued? And you were also on the conference call that we had with the Governor's Office.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. The so-called Sanctuary Cities received a communication from the federal government outlining its position on, you know, what potential actions they could take against so-called Sanctuary Cities. There were really no specifics. They indicated that individual letters would be coming to each Sanctuary City. And I'm assuming if they do that, it will outline exactly what they intend to do if we don't comply with whatever they're asking us to do. Obviously, anyone who or any municipality that has not 100% said they will work in coordination with ICE and the federal government and have, you know, what we thought had enacted legislation, basically saying that would be deemed a Sanctuary City. Apparently, some local governments have not filed, have not passed legislation, and they have still ended up on that list. As a result of that, they pulled the list over the weekend. So if you go to their website, you wouldn't see this correspondence that was sent out nationwide to select cities. So now where we are is we don't know whether or not an updated list, because apparently there were a couple of jurisdictions that had made a pledge to follow the federal government and were very much in lockstep with what the federal government was trying to do. But somehow they ended up on this list and they weren't too happy about it. So we don't know if that is why they pulled the list or it was based on criticism that they received from around the country, based on the professionalism of the letter. Apparently, there were typos in the letter. So but they pulled it sort of without explanation. We can expect probably something coming out again. But if they follow through what was in that correspondence, they will be sending the letter directly to each municipality that was listed, including us. And at that point in time, we'll have more information about what they intend to do or threatening to do, and then what response, if any, that we need to provide. So that's essentially where we are. And we, the Governor, the Governor's Office put together a pretty quick call right after this letter came out. We had it on Friday morning at 9:30. There were several municipalities. I think every impacted municipality was represented, not only by their elected officials. I was one of, I think, two attorneys on the line and some town administrators and city administrators, city managers. And essentially, the Governor, if he hasn't come out with that statement already, was going to put out a statement that he shared with the participating members of that call. And, you know, the question was whether or not we're just going to stand behind the Governor's statement in the for the time being, if we get this letter or solicitations from the media. A couple, at least one of my municipalities, NBC4 showed up at their town hall looking for comment. So right now, I think we're in a holding pattern. Really, that was a general solicitation or correspondence that they sent out late last week. Apparently, based on that correspondence, they are going to send out something that's, I guess, directly related to what they feel is going on in Edmiston and these other municipalities and try to threaten litigation or ask for some sort of written statement that we're going to comply with or cooperate with ICE. So it's hard to say what to do yet, because we have not been formally contacted directly by the federal government. So that's essentially where we are.
I just sent, Judge, I just sent to all of you the the statement from the Governor's Office.
And when they read it verbally, it it sounded good. And, you know, the Governor's Office needs to be applauded for jumping on this very quickly.
Absolutely.
Rod, can you send it to my Gmail? That's what I have open at the moment, if you don't mind.
The personal one?
The, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, this doesn't come in. That's all right.
Yeah, I thought so, too. I thought it was really quick. They responded that night. We had the call the very next morning. And then I actually got an email from the County Execs Office the following afternoon stating that the Governor's Office was going to contact us. So they were super duper late, which showed me that the Governor's Office was was definitely on it. And so that went a really long way. Made it feel so much better. Yeah.
Yeah, it, yeah, it, you know, a few participants weren't happy with the call. And I told them, and they were from jurisdictions I didn't even represent. And I told them, I said, you know, listen, you know, the Governor, I think they answered the questions the best they could at this point. I said, they just got the letter less than 24 hours ago. Okay? And so, you know, I found it to be to be helpful. I think calmed some nerves and and it sort of let us know that, listen, this is a statewide issue. It's not an Edmiston issue. It's not a Greenbelt issue. So, yeah.
I think you made a really good comment, too, just urging us to be careful of our response. Because just as they arrested a judge,
Yep.
any, any one of us can fall prey to that.
Exactly, exactly. It's just, you know, and the other thing is, we're right in the backyard of the White House. Okay, so, yeah, we have to be very careful about what we say. It can be construed as obstructionist. And that's what they got the judge on. Okay? And they said you, now she did some, you know, allegedly, she moved, you know, she hid some people, hid the person and told the person to go out a back door and to get away from ICE and all of that. But I don't think it's going to take much, okay, for them to interpret anything as being potentially obstructionist. So we just need to be careful.
That was spot on. That was good. So are there any questions or comments?
So we are not directly in receipt of any, like, the town of Edmiston is not directly in receipt of any federal funding. Everything that we have is sort of through a state program that receives federal funds. Is that correct?
Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, I was waiting to see if the mayor wanted me to answer that.
Oh, oh, yes. Uh huh.
Yeah, so no, we have direct federal funding in several areas. We we have a USDA food composting grant that is direct from federal. We have, I believe that our federal transportation, highway transportation grant is a little bit protected in that the grantee is Riverdale Park, but we're a partner with them. And so I guess I have made Riverdale Park aware about our situation so that if the federal government would identify that one. And then our community development block grant money comes through Prince George's County, which is federal money directly to them, then that comes down to us. And so, again, and Prince George's County was on the list. So that could impact us on several projects there. So, yes, we do have federal money coming to us in various manners.
Judge Deloach, the the call with the Governor's Office, is it your understanding that they're likely to be filing a lawsuit to enjoin any of these potential enforcement actions?
They made it pretty clear that, I think they made it pretty clear that we would most likely be on our own if we were going to be filing any litigation. They could potentially do that, but I don't know if we'll be able to join. We could try to join as an interested party, but they were kind of vague in what or what they would potentially do, because, again, there was nothing specific in this communication as to what to do. And it depends on what type of action the federal government is threatening to take as to the legal response, if any, from the state of Maryland. I can't believe, I don't believe they would abandon us if there was a way to foot the bill for this, okay, and allow us to join in. I think the Governor's Office would do it. But they have their own separate legal department that's going to advise them on how expansive they want this to be. I didn't get any indication from that call that they would try to distance themselves from the municipalities, if that's what you, no way.
No, no, I just, what I was curious about is if it would be sort of on behalf of, right? Like, in fact, we would join maybe something that the Attorney General's Office was filing.
Yeah, it depends on whether or not the action, because if the state of Maryland is going to be impacted differently, then we we are, okay, then it will be, it may be hard for us to join that lawsuit, okay? But what we were most concerned about is whether or not we got sued, okay? A lot of the callers were wondering whether or not, hey, if the federal government files a lawsuit against us, would the state of Maryland come in and help us, okay? And and that, they pretty much shut down. I don't know if there's any funding or anything that they can use, but the current state of, you know, finances in the state of Maryland makes that unlikely that they would be able to, you know, finance a defense. So but they didn't take anything immediately off the table.
Okay, so in the event that, like, the Civil Division of the Department of Justice were to, I mean, it seems like most of what, I mean, what they've done with the judge in Wisconsin, right, is 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 they've sought federal criminal charges against her. And, you know, and I'll leave my own personal views about all of that to the side. But, I mean, clearly, this is meant to to intimidate us, right? Like, to sort of intimidate us into an effort to try to to get us to sort of roll over and allow, for instance, our police department to act like an arm of immigration enforcement.
Well, yeah, I mean, there was probably a message there that if I can do this to a judge, I can do it to you, okay? And and the thing to remember, though, is they can't bring criminal charges against anyone for legislating, okay? I mean, you're in your official capacity. I think the thing that got sort of separated her was that they deemed her individual conduct as obstructionist, okay? And that's why we all have to be careful, you all have to be careful about what you say and what you do, okay? It's, it's, you know, can't protect you. I mean, they, it's one thing to to be right, okay? But what is it going to take to show the world that you were right? Is you get handcuffs put on you, you get thrown in jail, you get, you know, brought before Commissioner, you know? It's, it can be a pretty rough scene when you're when you're arrested. So that's why I said, you know, we just have to be careful about what we say. Residents are probably going to be, you know, concerned and obviously. And, you know, we just have to be careful about how we communicate things.
Is there any thought about specifically giving guidance to our police department with regard to this? Because frankly, I think that they are the folks who are kind of our, frankly, I feel like they're going to sort of be the the face of this, right? If there's any, you know, ICE shows up in our town, asks for backup or support from the Edmiston Police, right? And Edmiston Police isn't available. And that they would then interpret that illegally, in my view, as some sort of obstructionist kind of activity.
They have not ta, I don't know of any.
Betsy, look at me coming to the defense of our police department right now.
Yeah, I have not seen any examples around the country.
I'm learning every minute of it.
Yeah, examples of that. But as far as advising the police and getting to specifics about that, I would prefer to do that offline or in a closed session.
Okay.
Does anyone else, any questions?
I had a question, sort of like, it's what Sarah was asking. In the time that you've all been, I mean, I think Rod, Betsy and Tracy, you've been here the longest. Have we ever, has the police ever been summoned by ICE to do anything in the town?
No, not to my knowledge, since I've been in charge of the police department, we haven't had any communication with ICE. Some other chiefs may have, but I haven't got any phone calls and emails, so so far, not from what we've been good.
And do you all currently have a policy of, or like, any written steps or, yeah, any written, like, procedure of how to handle that if an ICE agent calls, like Sarah said, for backup?
Again, so no, we don't, because each situation is different. If it's to protect life, whether it's another officer or citizen, of course, we have to act. But anything assigned that they're doing specifically to accomplish their mission, no, we don't have a policy for that. But if it comes to just law enforcement in general, where they need us to back them up to help them save a life, or if they're down and they get injured or something like that, then we'll, we have to assist. But if it's something to accomplish their main goal, then no. Or their main objective, then no.
Then you're saying, no, you don't have a policy or no.
No, we don't have a policy and no, we won't participate. We will, you know, be on the perimeter to make sure that nobody gets injured, that's about it. But to go out there, actually look for anybody for ICE, we're not going.
So so we do have, so we do have.
So we don't have a policy when it pertains to accomplish an ICE mission. So we don't have a policy for that. But again, we have to act within the scope of being a police officer. If a citizen or another officer gets injured, then of course, we have to go in and do lifesaving measures. But to answer the question, no, for the policy in place, there's a policy in place to assist them to just effectively affect their mission goal or whatever they're here for. No, we don't have a policy for that.
So let me just make sure Chief understands, I know we don't have, do we have a policy? So if ICE comes into Edmiston, and do you have a policy in general on how to deal with ICE?
No.
Excluding the lifesaving measures?
No.
So there's no policy at all? But if somebody came in, if ICE came in, you would direct the department not to assist in the apprehension? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have an unwritten policy?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have. The follow-up question, I guess, would be if we wanted to have one, who would that fall under?
For the policy, or if you, once we type it up, I will send it off and we could put it into our policy system Lexicool. And it would contribute via the department via email, and we could also post it on our website.
I.
Can I request that we go into executive session?
I think that would be the best way to do it.
Yeah.
I agree.
I move we go into executive session to discuss a personnel manner.
Second.
It's there, second. All right. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Hi.
Who, who is going in session with us?
Yeah, who's going to, during the motion?
Yeah. We might, we need to, who made the motion? Was that you, Sarah?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So council members, mayor, chief, town attorney, town administrator.
And and we'll and we'll also come back out of the executive session and come back to the work session.
I'll come back when you all return.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
And to come and that we will return to open session after the executive session. So move again.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Rick, can you make that happen? Or do you have to drop everyone? Can you send us to a room?
I haven't been sent to my room in a long time.
Mayor, I can remove people. I have administrative rights.
Yeah, I was wondering, do we have to remove people or can we be sent to a room?
Yeah, I can remove. I don't know, without Rick on here, I don't know about the room thing.
Oh, no, I was asking, was Rick here? I didn't know if Rick was here. I guess he's, he's not responding.
Signed in, but I don't think he's paying a listening, apparently.
Miss Avery?
Do you want me just to remove these people?
No, not if we don't have to. That's why I'm asking the question. So I guess he's not, okay.
So all of the people that are going to get removed would be able to sign back in when the meeting starts back up. A room participation would be better, but then they could stay signed in, but I don't know how to do that.
We don't have it, yeah.
Let's see.
He's not here. Avery's not responding.
If you make me a co-host, I can put the group together.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coney.
Okay. Let me see, Ms. Coney, where is that, under share?
Say happy birthday to you, Coney, while we're all standing around, sitting around. Happy birthday.
Thank you. If you go to my screen, you're going to see three little dots. You're going to click on that and it's going to give you the option of making me a co-host.
Okay, very good. I'm glad you. So I, yeah, it doesn't give me that, but it says I can put you in a waiting room.
So. Different. That would just be you kicking me out of.
But, and that's what I'm wondering, is could I put the people that are on in a waiting room?
No, because then we're just going to be in like a hold room, but we won't be able to speak to each other.
But can he put the other people in a waiting room?
Oh, don't go ahead of yourselves. Just let him put, make Coney the co-host.
I can't, I can't, Mayor. I don't have that option.
Waiting room. They won't be able to see or hear us.
So I will put the each of them in a waiting room. There we go. All right, they're off. Let's see, let me make sure. Rod, Coney, Betsy, Sarah, Judge, Chief, Mayor, and Rick, and abstentia. Yeah, you're good. And are we recording? We don't want to be recording.
And then you'd have, I think you'd take Rick out to stop.
Take mail from the state police.
Okay, everybody's back and we are recording again.
Everybody's back. Hello, everyone. Oh, well, it's less people, huh? Hello, we are back. Our meeting, we thank you for holding on. And let me get to our, back to our agenda. Should have been trying to do that well. Mr. Barnes, you're quick. Right. The. So when we left, we were talking about our Sanctuary Cities. And then we went to our executive session. And now our next item is on everyone receive their agenda for, I'm sorry, yes, review the agenda for. No, you don't need that. The next item is the final consideration of ordinance 25 dash OR dash three. It's the mayor and council to appropriate and adopt the annual budget. We'll do that at our next meeting. Were there any, any questions on adopting the budget for 2526? Mr. Barnes? Any adjustments or changes that were made? Everything is good?
Yeah, no, no changes, Mayor.
All right. And then the next item is the amendment of the annual budget for fiscal year 2425. Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, this, we went over last council meeting. Unless somebody has any specific questions, just appropriates the dollars to where the budget line on it occurred. The revenue actually occurred.
All right. And if there are no changes or anything, we'll approve that. And then the next items will be to approve our minutes from May, the town council minutes and the work session minutes. And then and then before we review next week, not not next week, actually, Saturday, before Mr. Barnes and Ms. Avery go over that and the chief go over that, is there any motion from our executive meeting?
Ms. Turberville or Ms. McCully, is there a motion from our executive meeting?
I'm going to let Sarah put it in words.
I move that we adopt, that we incorporate ordinance 443 dash one into Lexicool.
All right, it's their second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. McCully? Ms. McCully?
Yeah.
Was that a aye?
That was an aye.
All right. All right, that motion passes. We'll merge it and incorporate it so it can be placed into Lexicool. Thank you so much. Nope, didn't need to. But yes, aye. Okay, now, an update for Saturday, Ms. Avery? Or Chief? Sure. Well, we're checking the weather, number one, and hoping for no storms.
Well, we're checking the weather, number one, and, uh, hoping for no storms. Or really any rain that would be problematic for the electrical equipment. But barring all of that, we're hoping for, uh, uh, exciting, lively parade and, uh. Festival. And we're having the festival, we're having pony rides, foam party. Moon bounce. Games, two food trucks, the train. We're having, um. The, uh, Randy's fire truck. Uh, he's one also, it's a foam party. We're having, um, ice cream truck. We're having, uh, live salsa band, we're having, uh, local. Um, band from an area church. Uh, we're having line dancing, we're having, um. Announcements from, um, local officials and the Kaboom. Foundation about playground development, redevelopment at Fletcher's Park. And, uh, hopefully get into check for the development of the Decatur Street and Fifty-first Avenue part.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms., uh, Chief? Thank you, Ms. Avery.
Uh, only I gotta add is that we're getting assistance from, uh, the other four town police departments. We're getting some from, uh, Blainsburg, some assistance from them. Uh, Brentwood as well as Cottage City. Um. We got the DJ on board, he's on board with performing not only in the parade, but also on a stage. So, uh, we order a two-gender race tomorrow, one for the back of the tow truck. Um, as well as one for the stage. Uh, we reached out to Alley Cat, Alley Cat will be providing a tow truck to be in the, uh, parade. One of their newest trucks, not the big one cuz it wouldn't fit in the town. Uh, but they're gonna put in the tow truck and of course ATTC will be in the parade as well with their truck for the DJ. Uh, we will have one police officer on bike. I'll be in the chariot and Lieutenant Martin will be. The one leading the parade, me, me, Taz, I'll be bouncing around trying to make sure that we, we need to slow up or speed up the parade. Um, and then the recruits will be blocking off the road. And that is all I have. But we'll just pick you back. So every time we get the parade past one roadblock. Um, I'll have those officers hop in the parade as well. Um, and move forward to block off the next road. We'll kinda just leapfrog it up until we get to the park.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Barnes?
Oh, I don't have anything, um, to add. We are excited about, um, getting our hundred and first birthday, um. Celebration underway and we have volunteers that did a birthday cake and we have just a lot of. The environmental floats back in, in, um, form and ready to be in the parade. We have. Um. The train will be back in the parade, so should be a fun day. We have ice cream to hand out and popcorn to everyone, so. Um, as Avery said, the. Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning are replacing the playground equipment over by the shelter adjacent to Fletcher's Field. So as they're going about that, they're doing it. Through a nonprofit organization called Kaboom and Kaboom. Uh, wants to get feedback from the community on what should be in the playground and then. They actually use the community to build the playground, um, in the fall, so, um, they're a national organization. Uh, and oddly enough. I don't believe people think that that playground over there where that is located is in Edmonton, but it is. And so it is within our boundaries. I don't know how many folks from Edmonton go over to it, but.
Wait, which playground are we talking about?
It's over, uh, across from Fletcher's Field, um, over. If you turn on the street that goes into Fletcher's Field as you're going down Tanglewood Drive. It's on the left-hand side by the shelter and bathrooms, um.
Oh.
It's a distance.
Including me as one of those people.
Yeah, so it's, it's really closer to the, all of the apartment complex and homes that are there Riverdale Park there and so. Uh, but it is actually within our boundary.
See, he said he didn't have anything. Um, Judge, did anyone ask, invite you? Did they invite you to participate in our parade or?
I, I, I think I was given notice of it. I'm gonna be in New York this weekend.
Oh.
Yeah, so, uh, I wouldn't be able to come, but, uh, it sounded like it was gonna be great. I would rather be there to be honest with you cuz I'm not a big fan of New York.
All those people. All those people and traffic, yep, yep, you are correct, you are correct.
But thank you.
Okay. Counsel, you have anything? All right. Well, don't forget your purple shirts, counsel.
What purple shirt?
You didn't get your new purple shirt?
Nope.
Oh. Sorry.
Oh, well.
Okay, I'm kidding.
I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Where my.
Oh, and Taz is gonna be there. Did you mention Taz? Ms. Avery?
No.
Or was that a surprise?
But we want Taz to do his suit work. As the Blainsburg honor guard finishes up their formation at this top of the, um. Festival if she is available.
Well, I had told, uh. Someone today, she would definitely, if the weather isn't too hot, the road, street isn't too hot.
Right.
Walk her in the parade.
Okay.
All right, great. Okay. Invite your family and friends. All right. Is there anything else? Do I have anything else on the agenda? Nope?
Yeah.
Was there anything I missed on the agenda? Because that's all I see.
Grant activities. A report on grant activities.
Oh, Jiminy, yeah. That's you, Mr. Barnes, grant activities.
I'll try to be.
Yes, this'll show us. All that we have.
Short on this, but just so you have some idea. Department of Natural Resources was our trail at the rec center, the, the price came in at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars and we had seventy-five thousand dollars to. Construct it, so, uh, what, it included exercise equipment, so now what we're doing is taking a look. Can we place that exercise equipment along our sidewalk in places where people can stop like, um, a station at the rec center, a station at town hall, a station at the bus stop. A station at Veterans Park so that folks then, as they're walking on the sidewalks. If they want to have a break to, um, do a little exercise activity of some sort, they can do that. So we'll be bringing that to you. Uh, the CDPG grant for sidewalks on Fifty-second Avenue is out for bid. The CDDBG grant for streetlights on Fifty-second Avenue is in its final design. Our USDA grant for food composting, those are all federal grants that I'm talking about here, so. Um, they are always in, um, impacted by whatever the federal government decides to do with. Grant dollars, um, our, our food composting is adding Chevrolet. We, Chevrolet picked up sixty-three customers, uh, so far. And, um, Cottage City is also, uh, joining us with that program and so Blainsburg, Comer Manor, Cottage City, Chevrolet in Edmonton. Uh, will be doing that. Our Safe Streets, Safe Roads is our federal highway administration grant. And that's through, in partnership with Riverdale Park and we've, um, everyone knows, I think. We talked about this last time and that we've identified the intersections that need to be evaluated and then what could potentially be demonstration, um, grants. We recently held our. Um. Post-construction meeting to review the work on Buchanan for the rain gardens. And then, um, our pre-construction for the rain gardens being built on Forty-seventh Avenue and Forty-ninth Avenue, so. Uh, both of those are not federal grants, those are, um, through Prince George's County and Chesapeake Bay Trust, so. Um. Should be safe, uh, the, the county has stopped. Um. The program, uh, temporarily, um, due to budget constraints, so the stormwater management grants will not be available for the coming year. The. Uh, Buchanan Street came in at such a, a cost-efficient and effective manner. We're able to add a few more gardens as we determine our final numbers. And that's a good thing. We have a Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Legacy, uh, grant and it's allowing us to do a mural. The, another bus stop and additional streetscape, uh, Rose Jaffe, she's on the meeting tonight. Uh, she is our local muris, muralist and is, um, beginning a process with the community to. Get input to build or to design the, um, mural which is, um, focusing on our Hispanic heritage. And it will be located on the back of, um, a building that is visible from the trail that goes between the Decatur Street Bridge and the rec center. Uh, the owner of the property, um, has allowed for that to occur, so we're very excited about that and will be finished in, um. Oh, go ahead, Rose is doing thumbs up, so, hi, Rose. Um, so we're very, very excited about that and it will be finished about the end of July approximately. Uh, weather permitting and everything else going as Rose planned, so if you haven't seen her work, she did the mural. At, uh, Eco City Farms, the beautiful one that everybody sees as you walk up to, to the farm, so. Um, we're very excited. We'll also have another bus stop that's similar to the, identical to the one at the corner of Fifty-second. And Decatur and then we'll have some streetscape activities. Uh, and then the final, uh, we'll be working with Rose to develop, um, ten murals that, um, will go on Buchanan Street that tell the history of the town, so. Uh, as you drive down Buchanan in front of the, the lot that is vacant, that has the chain link fence and the beautiful rain gardens now in front of those, that fence. You'll be able to see the history of Edmonton as it developed over time. So we'll be getting some input on that shortly and getting that project completed. So those are, I just wanted to give that recap because everybody concerned about our federal dollars. Those, but the last two grants are through the depart, Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And, um, so at this point in time, it's state funding and not federal and so. Not impacted that as far as we are aware. We do have, um. Another federal grant that is submitted and so whether we get considered favorably, maybe. Um, something that doesn't happen as a result of this situation, but, uh, we did submit for a flooding. Flood resilience, uh, through NIFWIT, um, the National, um, Fish and Wildlife People, and so it's a joint. Grant with Blainsburg, but we're the applicant, so. Um. We may, we'll see what happens there. We're getting ready to work on a new community legacy grant and. Also partnering up with, um, Blainsburg to do, um, Port Townsend branding, um, grant application. And if you haven't voted on a name for the new CDC, please do that. Um, we're closing those names and, um, thank you for those of you that have voted on it. Betsy, Sarah, thank you. Um. And. You'll be getting a new email with the final names and then, um, that. No clear winner came out, uh, several tied, so we will be sending that back out for a new vote.
I'm gonna vote tonight.
All right, thanks, Mary.
Whacker.
I know, I know, I know. Me and surveys, yeah.
And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for grants. If there's any questions.
No, thank you for Grant. Every time I turn around, he's writing grants, he's. Think, uh. He's the Grant Writer of the Year. Okay, yes, Sarah, that's right. Heart. All right, anything else?
Rod, how did the Kaboom? Relationship come about?
Uh, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning, uh, did that.
Okay.
They're, you know, they're a national organization and so they're always advertising and I was, I was always hoping that somehow there could be a connection with them, uh, but they work with. Um, they're a nonprofit that works with communities to do this, uh, and they, there is private funding going into this playground, uh, from. Uh, other entities. Fannie Mae is one of the organizations.
Mm-hmm.
And then they organize the, besides Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning capital dollars, then they organize the event where they actually erect. The, um, this one will be erected sometime in September. During the week, which we did indicate to the, um, representative that, you know, that's a. For our area, that's a difficult time when people are working and not gonna be necessarily available for volunteering to build a playground, but. Um. Apparently that's what works for them across the, the country. We do have, I think everybody knows this, but we are partnering with a class from the University of Maryland through the PALS program. Uh, for designing the new park at Fifty-first and Decatur, or not. Designing it, but giving us ideas that we potentially could use to, uh, build and develop that space, um, going forward, so. In the fall, uh, there'll be, they've, I've met with the professor and, um, so then the class will start doing that. We'll also take a look. Uh, they wanted to have a kind of a long-term relationship, the professor did, and so. I told him we had a couple of other areas, the Dead End Street at Emerson behind, um. Um, Elizabeth's Landing and then the Dead End Street at Fifty-second and. Uh, if you haven't been over and looked at the Zen Garden lately, please, at the end of Fifty-first Place, go over and take a look. It looks, the trees are maturing and starting to grow and take off, the benches are nice, it's a very quiet. Um, place to just sit and enjoy, uh, nature, the arviviti that we planted along the back fence to shield from the business side on the other side of the. Storm drain is, uh, are, is really doing its, what it needs to do, so. Um. So I'm excited about this and you. I guess I'm most excited because this will be the town's first park that we literally own ourselves and have total control over at Fifty-first and Decatur, so. Kind of exciting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, so I guess I'll see everyone on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yep. I hear the excitement in the room. And, um.
I was, I was looking at Sarah's, waiting for her to say.
Yes.
We need.
Put the kids in the truck and drive them around.
When does the parade start?
The parade, uh, two, three, two.
Line up at one, right?
The parade is at two. Um, yes, line up at, starting at one. Lafayette and Ingraham. And Sarah, do you wanna do, uh, one of the gems? Mayor, you're gonna ride on the, with the microphone, right?
Um, hmm. On the flatbed or whatever.
Hmm, you can easily also ride on the. Fire truck, uh, Randy indicated, but I don't know what.
I don't save a spot for you every time.
Huh, yeah. And I climb down. It's so restrictive and it's hot that, that, um. Whatever that material is, it, it's hot. And I can't get down, but anyway.
But, um. Sarah, if you and the kids wanna do one of the gems.
That's a way to lock her in.
You're welcome to do that.
Or the train, ride on the train, the kids.
You notice she, that's the attorney in her, look at her not saying anything.
Well, I know, I know, I, but, um.
Okay, uh, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. All right, is there a second, Sarah?
A second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.